Dennis Miller.
Here.
Angela Woodward.
Here.
Dan Lawson.
Here.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening and welcome everyone to the September 3 meeting of the Ashland City Council. To our viewers, thank you for joining us, members of council, Mayor Miller, welcome. Before we begin, I'd like to call for a moment of silence to honor Dr. Lucille Ford's passing. Many of us know Dr. Ford led a life of personal accomplishment as well as service to the community that is truly unmatched. She exemplified what it meant to serve your community and let us take her lead. She not only talked the talk but walked the walk. She was a person of action and was someone to truly admire. So with that, if you would bow with me in remembrance. Thank you all.
Do you mind if I add?
Not at all.
I'm going to add to that.
Mayor?
Dr. Lucille Ford was someone who had all of the character attributes, all of the God-given charisma, the intelligence and the charm and the resources that she could have gone anywhere in the country and been a tremendous success. And probably on a much more wide scale when it comes to fame and fortune. And yet she focused her efforts on her hometown, Ashland, and look at how she totally helped transform the community. If you just look at the community foundation in and of itself, what she began and worked for 10 years for only a dollar to create, look at the legacy that alone leaves behind. And then consider all of the students, all of the friends, all the current community leaders who spent time alone with Dr. Ford in her office, talking over their own aspirations or their own future dreams or their own ideas of what could be. It is pretty incredible of the difference that she has made in the world, in our world here in Ashland, by focusing her efforts on her hometown.
Sure.
So.
The power of one.
That is it, absolutely. So thank you for letting me say that.
Thank you, Mayor.
Because I've been thinking it and we actually talked about it today in the office.
She'll be missed. So with that, we'll move right to our agenda. First item of business will be the approval of the minutes from the August 6 special meeting of the city council. If there are no additions, deletions, or corrections to those minutes, I'll ask for a motion to approve as submitted.
Move to approve.
Sir, second?
Second.
Thank you.
Lawson.
Aye.
Workman.
Aye.
Kyle.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Woodward.
Aye.
First ordinance this evening will be an ordinance authorizing certain land belonging to the city of Ashland, Ohio, to be sold through the Community Improvement Corporation and declaring an emergency.
Move for non-reading in full.
Second.
Thank you.
Lawson.
Aye.
Workman.
Aye.
Kyle.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Woodward.
Aye.
Okay, this is kind of exciting. One month ago, at our council meeting, this council took action to acquire for $25,000 what's known as the Frontier Building on Main Street, 118 West Main Street. This is a building that has been vacant for more than 20-plus years. Countless people have went inside the building, looked at it as a possible new home to their businesses, but it is really in rough condition. And over and over again, one of the biggest challenges was being able to talk to the quote "right" person to get action on the sale of the property. Well, the city was very blessed to be able to reach the right person in Dallas, Texas at Frontier, and she agreed to sell the building to us, the company agreed to sell the building to us, if we could close by September 1 for $25,000. As the council knows, at that time, we discussed the fact that our mission in buying that building was to be able to have local decisions or local control over the decision of who that building went to or how that building was redeveloped. Because right now, 20 years it's sat vacant because no one could get a hold of the right people to sell it. And fortunately, the city was able to do so. Well, tonight, one month later, we are proposing that we sell the building to Matthew Bernhard. Most people will know Dr. Bernhard as one of our most famous physicians in the region. Dr. Bernhard is willing to acquire the building for the $25,000 that we paid for it, and then he and his sons plan to invest a significant amount of money in revitalizing the building, introducing a new business or two to that downtown space. And quite honestly, it's only a linchpin for a much larger vision of what they want to do in this next chapter of their lives. And it's all sports-related, but it's very exciting. And I believe we have the right prospect now to move forward with this. I will say, thank you, Lord Jesus, that we found someone so quickly because it was never our intentions to have to own that building and maintain that building and clean up that building like we did on 16 West Main Street. So I propose tonight that the council consider selling the property to Dr. Bernhard for a total cost of $25,000, which is what we invested in the property. And let me just say this, in parentheses, anyone who thinks, well, he's getting a heck of a deal, you've not went through the building. You are easily looking at over six figures, seven figures probably. Seven figures would be a more accurate number to bring that building back to life. It's got a great shell, it's a lot of great space, but over the years, the roof had deteriorated. And so all that weather, year after year, has come through the third floor roof, through the second floor, and it's quite a...
Mess.
Mess, to say the least. And we, I did talk with some folks at the State of Ohio Department of Commerce in Jobs, Ohio, and they do believe that they have a grant that might be able to be used to help remediate all of the asbestos and those issues in the building. And with our sponsorship, they, he can, it can be privately owned, and he can still access that money for the remediation. Because they have a program that is geared just toward that, revitalizing old facilities like that. So hopefully, if you decide to sell it to him, we can work with him to make that happen. But it'll be a lot of private dollars going into that renovation.
Any discussion? I'd just like to say thank you, Mayor, for making the appropriate contacts.
Yes.
To approve that building along, yes, and it's been a long time coming.
Yes. Thank you.
With that then, is there a motion to approve on the first reading?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you.
Workman.
Aye.
Kyle.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Woodward.
Aye.
Lawson.
Aye.
I will move to suspend the rules for three separate readings, three separate days.
Second.
Thank you.
Kyle.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Woodward.
Aye.
Lawson.
Aye.
Workman.
Aye.
Motion to approve the ordinance?
So moved.
Sir, second?
Second.
Thank you.
Miller.
Aye.
Woodward.
Aye.
Lawson.
Aye.
Workman.
Aye.
Kyle.
Aye.
Ordinance 55-24.
All right, it is 7:10. We'll move right to our public hearing item, which is the vacation of an alley at Clermont in Washington, otherwise known as the Wayne Savings Alley. Goes up through their drive-through there.
And I believe we have an image for this screen? We don't tonight? All right, we showed one at our last meeting, so I know folks have probably had a chance to see it. All of the council members, you have a map in front of you that you can take a look at. But basically, and it was appropriate that you describe this as the Wayne Savings Alley, because for all intents and purposes, everyone would think that it was the driveway to Wayne Savings Bank. It actually extends from West Washington Street behind Taco Bell to Wayne Savings. In fact, it was one time very much a part of their drive-through bays there off Washington Street. You can see that the other portion of it that leads out to Clermont has never been developed. It's green grass at the moment. We do have a sewer line extending off of West Washington Street, down across the back of the Taco Bell and on past Wayne Savings. So we would have to maintain an easement, which shouldn't be a problem. But it just seems as though this does not serve a public use. And for that reason, it's worth our time to consider vacating it.
Yeah, I believe they own the lot beside or between Taco Bell and the bank as well. So that seems logical that they would get full responsibility for that alley anyways. All right, does council have any discussion on the matter before we open it up to the public?
Does the portion then that is across the back of the Taco Bell lot, does half of that go then to the Taco Bell franchise owner?
It would. It would. Now, they can always work out a deal with Taco Bell if they want to maintain all of it, but otherwise, it would be divided.
All right. With that then is, if there's anyone here from the general public who would like to take part in the hearing, you're more than welcome to step up to the podium and address council. You have any questions, Dylan?
And you know what? We're using the wrong name. It's no longer Wayne Savings. It's the Main Street Bank, isn't it? The Main Street Bank. So if there are no comments from the audience, of course, as council knows, the next step is for the Board of Revision and Assessments to consider whether or not they'll recommend to the council the vacation of this alley. So if you two gentlemen are willing to have that discussion, I would ask the question, do we have a motion to vacate the alley that's before you?
I think before we go there, I think it's very important to note that there is a stormwater line that drains from the back of their previous drive-through out to Clermont. And the mayor is absolutely correct. There's a sanitary sewer line that runs from Washington Street down into the city's parking lot. Even though we're ma, we are vacating or proposing to vacate this alley, that easement has to be maintained. They cannot build on that property or that, over top of that sewer line. They can build to the east of it, but they cannot build on top of it even though we're vacating that because if that line were to break or plug or whatever, the city has the right in the jurisdiction to go in and to tear that up to get that line fixed because it does service some of the properties on Clermont as well as that particular location. So as long as an easement is maintained, I don't believe that there's any need for the city to maintain or to retain jurisdiction over that property. It's probably more prudent for the bank to take that responsibility.
Appreciate those comments. Any other discussion? If not, do we have a motion to vacate, recommend to the council the vacation of this alley?
Mayor, I would make a motion that the Board of Revision and Assessment recommend to this council that these alleys on Washington Street and Clermont be vacated.
Second that motion.
All right, then, any further discussion? If not, all in favor of vacating the alley signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, nay. Motion carries. So now, the Board of Revision and Assessments has recommended to the council the vacation of this alley.
All right. With that, we'll close our public hearing and appreciate you allowing us time to conduct that and we have our recommendation. With that, I'll move right to the ordinance, which is an ordinance to vacate a certain alley situated in the city of Ashland, Ohio, and declaring an emergency.
Move for non-reading in full.
Second.
Thank you.
Workman?
Aye.
Kyle?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Woodward?
Aye.
Lawson? Aye.
And with no further discussion, is there a motion to approve on the first reading?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you.
Kyle?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Woodward?
Aye.
Lawson?
Aye.
Workman?
Aye. I again will move to suspend the rules for three separate readings, three separate days.
Second.
Thank you.
Miller?
Aye.
Woodward?
Aye.
Lawson?
Aye.
Workman?
Aye.
Kyle?
Aye.
Motion to approve the ordinance?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you.
Woodward?
Aye.
Lawson?
Aye.
Workman?
Aye.
Kyle?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
It's ordinance 56-24.
All right. Moving on to resolutions, the first resolution this evening will be a resolution accepting the amounts and rates as determined by the Budget Commission and authorizing the necessary tax levies and certifying them to the county.
Move for non-reading in full.
Sir, second?
Second.
Thank you.
Kyle?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Woodward?
Aye.
Lawson?
Aye.
Workman?
At the conclusion of our tax budget previously this year, this now allows, that was submitted to the County Budget Commission for their review and consideration. This resolution now comes back to you. The second page, Schedule A, does show the millages, the inside millages and the outside millages. And if everything were to be 100% collected, it would show the actual dollar amount that those millages would collect. Please keep in mind that no property taxes collected at 100%, but it does allow us to go and begin the process of preparing appropriations for next year.
Any questions, concerns? Hearing none. Is there a motion to approve on the first reading?
Move to approve.
Second.
Thank you.
Miller?
Aye.
Woodward?
Aye.
Lawson?
Aye.
Workman?
Aye.
Kyle?
Aye.
And again, I'll move to suspend the rules for three separate readings, three separate days.
Second.
Thank you.
Woodward?
Aye.
Lawson?
Aye.
Workman?
Aye.
Kyle?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Motion to approve the resolution?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you.
Lawson?
Aye.
Workman?
Aye.
Kyle?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Woodward?
Aye.
Resolution 10-24.
Next, we have a resolution declaring council's intention to vacate a certain unimproved street located in the city of Ashland, Ohio, known as 55 Bell Avenue.
Move for non-reading in full.
Second.
Thank you.
Miller?
Aye.
Woodward?
Aye.
Lawson?
Aye.
Workman?
Aye.
Kyle?
Aye.
Kudos to our woman behind the curtain. Amanda is going to put this one up. She just, I just texted to her, so this will show you the marvels of technology. Because a picture's worth a thousand words, right? This particular alley is, I'll stand up just because it might be easier. Here's Bell Avenue. The alley that we are, I'm sorry, there's Bell Avenue. The alley that we are proposing the council consider vacating currently is a gravel driveway. And this property owner's vehicle parks in that gravel driveway, and we think that it no longer serves, if it ever did, a public purpose. And so with that in mind, we're proposing that you set a public hearing to consider the vacation of that alley.
Is this...
So I'm just curious, Matt, does that individual not have a driveway?
That is, yeah, that is what they're using for their driveway.
Oh, okay.
So I guess the question is, they do, but it's a city street.
All right.
And it looks like the other one next door has a driveway.
Yes, yes.
So the resolution says this is an unimproved street.
That's right. I used the wrong term. I apologize.
Is there a difference between that and alley? Same thing, right?
Yes.
The same conditions, 50% goes each side?
Yes, exactly. So same scenario, but...
All right.
And there's no other utilities or sewer systems or anything we need?
Yeah, there's a sewer line right there.
Yeah, you can see the sewer line, the red line represents the storm sewer, right?
Oh, yeah.
Yes.
So again, the right... Basically, what it boils down to is this. The city is currently maintaining someone's driveway. And it's probably not appropriate for us to be maintaining someone's driveway. They need to be responsible for that.
That they've used for 25 years.
Yes.
Similar to our previous...
Yes, yes.
Being that that is going to be divided, will there be enough room for that gentleman or household to have a driveway?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
20 feet.
All right, I was just making...
Nope, that's a good question.
Making sure.
Yeah. So...
So, I'm sorry.
No, no, you're right.
Well, this is a resolution to declare council's intention to vacate. So with that then, we can set a public hearing date for it, but we'll pass the resolution first. And with that, is there a motion to approve on the first reading?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you.
Woodward?
Aye.
Lawson?
Aye.
Workman?
Aye.
Kyle?
Aye.
Miller? Aye.
I'll move to suspend the rules for three separate readings, three separate days.
Second.
Thank you.
Lawson?
Aye.
Workman?
Aye.
Kyle?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Woodward? Aye.
Lawson?
Motion to approve the resolution?
Move to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Lawson.
Workman?
Aye.
Kyle?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Woodward? Aye.
Lawson? Aye.
And our clerk has given me the date of 10/15 as a proposed public hearing date. If council has no objection, we'll set that as a date or do we need to vote on that? Sound good?
Yeah.
Okay. Hearing date will be 10/15. And at that meeting, we'll conduct our public hearing. Moving on then to old business and new business, there is none in this...
I have a new business item, but this is unusual, but I was told that we can, we just need the council to give us their consent or not. If you recall, E.R. Bullion's Company, the meatpacking firm, previously visited our meeting, probably, what, last year, about a potential building on Jacobson that they wanted to acquire to move and expand their meatpacking facility. It currently exists on Cleveland Avenue. We've never had any problems in that area with them being there. Previously, they came to our council meeting and asked if the council would approve them using that building on Jacobson as a meatpacking plant. The reason they needed to do that was because our zoning language, which we're working on hopefully getting updated here soon, still stems from generations ago where to put a meatpacking facility in certain zoning areas, you had to have the council's consent. That deal fell through, and now they are looking at potentially locating their facility, if the council will give consent, to the building that many of us would recognize as the old Timken Building on Bany Road, right next to our dog shelter, our new dog shelter. I think it was Ohio Tool Works for a short time. It's been vacant for a while. They would like to relocate their facility there and actually, I believe, consolidate some of their other locations because they do have locations in Mansfield as well. And the same zoning situation exists in that territory in the city where in order for them to do so, they would need the consent of the council. During the last visit, the question that I think everyone wanted answered was, does this mean there's livestock out back? Does this mean that the animals are harvested outside the building? As is the case with Cleveland Avenue, none of that takes place outside. The animals are driven inside the building and all of their processing occurs inside the building. There's no waste disposed of outside or anything like that. So tonight, I am asking the council if you would agree to allowing them to be located in that facility on Bany Road should they reach a deal with the current owners.
They're going to store their animals 100% inside that building. They're not going to have to put up an open air...
No, I don't believe so.
Barn.
Nope, it's just like on their current facility. All the animals go right inside, yeah.
Even if they were, Jason? I would say that's a more appropriate location, given its proximity to the fairgrounds and residential areas.
Oh, I'm not disagreeing with you.
Versus Jacob's.
It would just seem different than most every other packing plant I've ever been to. And I've worked on a lot of them.
I've worked on a lot of them, and it's just, that's uncommon, so.
Like I say.
Not that I'd be against it, if they put a barn up behind it, and, and I remember that, I remember that, and, and I was like, hmm.
And I asked them, would there be any animals outside or?
And I, I realized their entire process takes place inside, it has to.
Yes.
It has to by, 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 by state code, but.
The only thing I can imagine, and I think, I don't know how the animals arrive, if they arrive in a.
They arrive in stock trucks.
Yeah, exactly, so I guess there would be exposure.
Especially there, there's lots of local.
Yeah.
Producers that deliver directly to there, and, yeah, they run them down a ramp and.
Well, and I guess the best, maybe the best example of what the operation would be like would be the fact that they are on Cleveland Avenue.
Right, 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 yeah, and there's no problems, no, no, not at all. And I'm not trying to jam it up, I just, it's, it's unusual, and I, I know all those guys, so I just.
Would this require that we rezone that area then?
No. No, you just have, they just have to have consent from council.
Okay.
So, and I ask if we had to have an ordinance before this meeting, and I'm told, no, we just need a consensus, note the consensus that the council supports the change, and we should be covered.
I support the change.
It's not a change, but it's an allowance, I guess, yes.
I'd like to see that building put to use, so.
Yes, absolutely, I agree.
Well, and the original plan was they would still maintain their facility in Mansfield and have this facility on Jacobson, I believe. This new plan would allow them to, I believe, I don't wanna speak for the company,
Sure.
but I think it's quite possible the company will grow here in Ashland if they get this facility.
That's a good sized facility.
Yes. So.
Alright.
I don't know how you take that, if you just reach a consensus, or you do an inform, a vote, an informal vote, or, I guess it's formal, it's all public. Yeah, just a motion.
All in favor, signify by, well, we need a motion to approve the allowance of E.R. Boyance relocating to the Bany Road location.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Terry, you wanna do a roll call? Okay. Aye.
Kyle?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Woodward?
Aye.
Lawson?
Aye.
Alright, very good.
I appreciate you doing that, I just had the conversation today, and they'll be very pleased, cause they are trying to close the deal, so.
Well, when they were here before, I mean, their reputation.
Yes.
Goes without saying.
Yep.
And we spoke at length with, with them.
Absolutely. And the owner, the owner was here, and his team, yeah.
Yes, exactly, so I'm comfortable with it.
Good, good company.
Glad they're gonna be here in Ashland.
I think so too.
Any other new business? Hearing none, we'll move right to the finance director's report.
At this point, we are completing the tax budget process as we did this evening, so that we can prepare for next year. We are working on several grants and projects, trying to get that completed, or at least get started before the end of the year. Some of that work will carry over into next year, I believe, but it's, we're winding down on one. We have completed the audit, I think I may have reported that at the last meeting. We are completing the filing of the Securities and Exchange Commission information, so that we can go and get that taken care of. So, trying to wind down on some of our projects and begin working towards the end of the year and next year.
Hard to believe we're here already.
It is.
Yeah, four months.
Any questions for Mr. Paxton? Hearing none then, we'll move right to council comments, Mr. Kyle?
I actually am gonna use my time for a question, and maybe this would be in the mayor's comments anyhow, but we haven't talked about it for a while, so. But I had a cut, question come to me, you know, what's the status of the city paving project? And specifically Claremont Avenue from Smith to down towards the college.
I don't know what the start date is at this point on Claremont, now, work has begun on Sandusky, so that's a major project, but I have not heard the start date for Claremont.
Okay.
No. So.
It's getting late.
It is getting late.
Getting late.
Gotta get it in before those fifty degree temperatures.
Yeah. That's all I have.
It's a county project, but many people have been curious as to when the West Main Street Bridge will be completed and that road reopened, and Ed Mixner has said that it, they poured the deck a couple weeks ago, takes like twenty-eight days or so for it to cure. And, but, so the timeline right now, cause they've had favorable weather, is the nineteenth or the twentieth of this month, so it's getting close. He also mentioned that the people that are most impacted, those that live around the bridge, have been absolutely excellent to work with. He says he's never had any problems with any of them, and they've been very, very accommodating to all the mess that's been going on over there, and couldn't say enough nice about them, so that's a, you know, another testament to the nice city that we are.
Mrs. Woodward?
Also gonna give a shout out, Columbia Gas hired Miller Pipeline to put in the gas line on Cleveland Avenue. A wonderful company to work with, they did wonderful with my, my neighbors, I've had neighbors say that they've been very polite, very professional. It was just great to see how, how well they did and quick, they were very quick. The only question is, is the sidewalk. My neighbors are asking me when the sidewalk is going in, so maybe we can find, see if we can figure that out.
They've been fairly responsive, I mean, right away, as soon as they get through down the streets, they usually come back through with the sidewalks all at one time, so.
They have. Okay, very good.
I would think it would be soon if they've completed their gas line.
They're, they're, they're almost to the end, they're almost to the end, but they've done a good job. And then I had a question about the lot beside the post office.
Yes.
What is going on with the lot beside the post office?
So did the local media.
Yeah.
And I did talk to, I think, the person that was interested in that. I will tell you that it is, and there's many people that are interested, not the least of which are myself, but I will tell you, the city did go up and clear out the big weeds. The reason we are still waiting is for that final clearance on the site from the authorities in Columbus. And I'm not trying to pass the buck, but because we had to remove fuel, fuel tanks, and there was some contamination of the soils, there has to be a final green light that we can pave or build on that site. Last week, I checked to get an update, and I was told that we were still, there still might need to be, I hesitate to say this, a little bit more cleanup at that site, but I have not confirmed that, I don't know what that means. But that is why you're not seeing any action on that site. Now, the house behind it, that is moving forward, the demolition of that structure. And I know at least the week before last, all the utilities were being disconnected, our city crews were out there, capping water lines and so on. And so that should be coming down here very soon.
Great.
So, I do also wanna say, if people have asked me, so, I can't wait for that to become post office parking. That is absolutely what we've said all along, in the short term, that would become additional parking, and we would allow the post office customers and employees to park there. We know it's a heck of a parking situation at that post office these days. But I wanna tell you, the long term, or at least the, the ideal use of that, will be that it sold to some business that wants to build something on that corner. And for the first time since we've started this discussion, about three weeks ago, a developer did contact us about that property. And it would be a retail and commercial establishment, so they've got more steps they need to go through before they'll know definitively whether or not they want that location. But that is a possibility. So I just want people to know that, because if fate would have it, that they would come and offer us money to buy that property, I think we would probably be inclined, obviously the council will be weighing in on that decision, but I would think we would be inclined to get it in the hands of the private sector, so that someone can grow our local economy in that way. But, one thing that people have to realize is, we do not own the post office, we do not own the parking lot of the post office, that is all privately owned. That means there's a landlord that is paying, getting paid every month to allow the post office to be there. And while we want to add to the ease of accessing the post office to the best we can to our citizens, someone could make a strong case, the city doesn't need to build a parking lot for the landlord's building. But in the short term, we wouldn't be doing it for the landlord, we'd be doing it for our citizens that need the ease of access and can't find parking. But ideally, we would like to see it developed. So, and if you disagree with that, let me know, and we won't sell it.
Mr. Lawson?
Well, these two kinda stole some of my thunder. Recently, the city has been in my development in our area.
Yes.
Doing some top grind and patching, and they've done an excellent job, by the way, they outstanding work, and it's very, very smooth to drive over, so I, kudos to that. But that did raise the question on the part of some of my neighbors, what about the rest of the street paving? And so Jason raised that question too, specifically Claremont, and, and they've asked those questions too. So, we'll be satisfied with the answer you gave.
I just got an update text, still doesn't have a date, but it, they're telling me they're gearing up now, and they are coordinating the subcontracting of the milling machine to get started. So, should be soon.
Secondly, at least in our neighborhood, we've seen, and I think is early and premature, but some of the trees, at least the maple trees, are turning and leaves are dropping already. So people have been asking me, are you gonna move up the leaf pickup, or are you gonna alter the leaf pickup schedule? It's, maybe it's too early to tell if we're gonna have an early fall, but we're already seeing leaves on the ground.
Right now, we are operating with the idea that it would start October twenty-eighth. Now, if the weather pattern should change in a way that all the leaves start dropping significantly before that, then we would change it. But right now, we're planning October twenty-eighth as a start date, so.
Good to know. Yeah, and I too have had people ask about that, that lot you just spoke about, so.
And if you, let me just say, in regard to those leaves, if you have a situation where all your leaves have fallen, by all means, we will work with you. If that situation exists, someone just needs to let us know, and we can have the crew go out and get your leaves. We wouldn't do it on a regular routine route or anything, but if you've got a situation, cause there have been situations on Cleveland Avenue, where some of the trees lost their leaves completely, I don't know if Mother Nature was a part of that decision as much as it was, maybe their root systems were destroyed when the gas line went through. In those cases, we went out and picked them up, so.
Good to know.
So we're willing.
Thank you.
Alright, I too have a question, Mayor, I've seen everything from golf carts, skateboards, motorized scooters, dirt bikes, practically you name it, it's been up and down the streets of Ashland.
Oh, absolutely.
In some areas, you would never dream of seeing a dirt bike, for example. And I question whether or not these are legal to be driven or ridden up and down the streets, in and out of traffic. I mean, they, they seem to disregard the traffic laws. If you've ever seen anyone on a scooter or a motorized skateboard, and, and I would just like to know, what is the law?
Well, I don't know the law on all those different types of vehicles, I do know golf carts, I did look into. We could, the council could take action to legalize the use of golf carts on our streets, there are a lot of them in the city. And for the most part, people have used good sense and at least kept them on side streets and on the quieter streets, and you don't see them going up and down Claremont Avenue. But technically, they would not be legal on our streets. Now, motorbikes and dirt bikes and all that, I don't know, I've never investigated.
And scooters and skateboards are?
I mean, I would think scooters would be, I mean, I don't know, I guess, the scooter law, but I would think that.
But I think the scooters he's referring to are, because it became really prevalent, you know, right after Christmas this year, all these little electric scooters, I mean, you, we're talking kids of all ages.
Yes, but they're on the sidewalks.
Running down Smith Road.
Oh, really, well, you've got a wide street, so you would.
I've seen it on Bany.
Wide street with fast cars.
Yep.
Even on Bany, I've seen.
Yeah, on Bany, yeah, I've seen them out there.
It's, it's like, well, there's a car, I pull out in traffic, there's a car in that, my lane, so I'll just go in the other lane. You know, I wouldn't recommend that.
Might be the age of the operator.
Yes, yes, but it appears to be a hazard, and I, I just was questioning the legality of it.
And I don't know the laws that relates to those items.
So leave it to the police to monitor.
I mean, if you see that, definitely let us know, I mean, the council can always pass an ordinance to forbid those particular vehicles.
I too am seeing an increased number of them.
Yeah.
Visiting where I work, but also up and down the streets and at the university, the, the electric scooters that you stand on, and, and drive around, and I just saw three of them on the university campus today, they were on the sidewalk, but I have seen them go into the streets.
Now, and everyone's entitled to their own opinions, I will say that to me, to see those scooters on the sidewalks, I don't find those offensive or harmful in any way. Now, if they're on Bany Road in the midst of heavy traffic and switching lanes, that's clearly.
Right.
Causing an issue, but I do see certain individuals on those scooters every day, clearly taking them to and from work. And I've never thought it created any issue, but I, if, if they're crossing in front of traffic and doing what you just described, that is a whole different ballgame.
I, I look at it as, well, until someone gets hurt, it won't be an issue. I hate to see anyone get hurt, but that's usually how traffic matters work. It's unfortunate, but I look at it as a, a bicycle.
That's what I would kinda think of as well.
And, and the rules should be followed, but you won't always have that, I guess, given the age of.
But the golf cart one does interest me a lot, they all do, but that one is one that perhaps we need to look at whether or not we want those on our streets. I personally think as long as they were licensed, it's.
I'll just tell you, because I have one.
Yes.
I had to have it licensed.
Yes.
And it is street legal.
Well, the good, then yours is.
So, I'm allowed to have mine on the street.
Well, see, maybe, then maybe that is the solution.
You buy license plates and all that.
I have to buy a license plate, yes, I have to have insurance, so.
I've seen these.
I don't ride on the street.
I, I wouldn't, I, in the sense we're speaking an opinion, I wouldn't, I wouldn't make it blanket. You know, many, many, many communities, Ohio, different states, they have golf cart friendly communities, and that kinda restricts them, right? They can't run down Claremont to Witz, you know, you limit it to two lane, twenty-five mile an hour and under, and that kinda restricts where you can go. So I think it takes more than just saying, oh, if you're licensed and you're street legal, you can go anywhere you want. I think we need to consider, to keep them off of the major.
And I think that's the way I've looked at it all along, cause this is, several years ago, I was looking at whether these were legal or not, especially the golf carts. And I have not seen any of our residents abuse the golf cart.
I haven't seen.
And for that reason, I personally am inclined to say, we don't need to fix a problem that doesn't exist. Someone driving their scooter recklessly, then we'll call the, let us know, we'll get the police to stop that. But I just think you're right.
I hear you.
We've gotta use discretion, because there's not vast abuse of any of those vehicles happening in this city.
My, my, my worry is that people are kinda like, am I allowed to do this or not?
I know, exactly.
And then as soon as, you know, it will be publicly known if it is legal.
Yes.
Cause that's kind of a big deal, and that's cool.
Yes, it is, it is.
And then everybody in town's gonna have one, so.
You gotta remember.
Hey, I want everybody to have fun too.
You gotta remember, most of these golf carts go twenty-five miles an hour, so that is most of our speed limits inside of our city limit.
Which is fine.
You have to follow the rules, like, you know, you have to use your blinker and, you know.
And like I say, I've never seen them on major thoroughfares. Do you wanna follow one down Claremont? I don't.
Well, probably if you'd follow them down Claremont, you'd actually be going the speed limit, cause it's twenty-five.
We'll see.
Yeah, I saw, I saw, actually a scooter down Claremont Avenue.
Like slow people down.
Like, just like they were a car.
Meaning one of these where they stand upright on, oh, wow, I have not seen it.
Yeah.
Boy.
And they weren't on the sidewalk, they were on the street, wow.
Interesting. Well, thank you for fielding my question.
Was it Larry Paxton?
No, it wasn't Larry Paxton, it wasn't Andrew Bush either.
Alright, that's right. No, I've seen Andrew, he's on the sidewalk.
It was Terry.
Okay, with that, Mayor, I'll hand it over to you.
Well, that was fun. So, let's just say that Con Grove, on, on September twelfth at eleven AM, September twelfth at eleven AM, we're going to have a brief dedication ceremony of the ballfield there at that park. We've had a donor that has stepped forward and helped us with signage and a memorial. We've had a donor that has stepped forward and helped us with signage and a memorial, not a memorial, well, I guess maybe it is a memorial plaque, to name that field after a famous, accomplished Ashlander. And as I sit here, I'm wondering, should I be telling that name now or not? I think we wait, don't we? I think we need to wait and unveil that, that day.
I like surprises.
But it, and it isn't Dr. Ford, and it isn't any one of our current generation, but it's an important Ashlander that grew up here and was incredibly successful in baseball. So you can probably, some people would, would know, because he's not unknown in our community, but I think everyone will be very pleased. And it'll be a great field to rename. And if you haven't been down there, Con Grove has a whole new life, doesn't it?
It sure does.
With the pickleball courts and the new improvements at the baseball field.
Sidewalks, the sidewalks are amazing.
Yes, absolutely, absolutely. So it's good.
Anything else?
Nope, because we talked about Leaf Pickup Day. Oh, I know, and Trick or Treat. I'm getting questions about Trick or Treat. This year, as fate would have it, Halloween is Thursday night, when we usually have our Trick or Treat. So Trick or Treat will be on October thirty-first.
Good.
So. That should be it. And it's rain or shine. Rain or shine, unless it is absolutely weather warnings, stay off the streets, it would be going on.
All right.
All right.
With that, we'll move right to comments and questions from our audience. If anyone is here who would like to address council, you're more than welcome to. Seeing no takers, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Thank you.
Lawson.
Aye.
Workman.
Aye.
Kyle.
Aye.
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 Thank you all for coming. We are adjourned.
Thank you for your help with all.